Officer, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. This meeting is called to order. Officer, we have a few questions we'd like to ask you. So let's see, you are second grader at Bethune Academy. Is that correct? And what's your favorite subject?
Art.
Art, very nice. And what would you like to do when you grow up?
I would like to be an artist.
Oh, do you draw a lot of things now? Do you have a lot of things? Well, did you bring anything with you that you could show us? Oh, that's too bad. Well, maybe next time. Do you have anyone here with you that you'd like to introduce?
Yes, I have my principal, Ms. Knowles, and my mom.
Please stand. Well, Officer, thank you so much for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. You did a wonderful job, and we appreciate you. Thank you.
It's my pleasure.
Madam Superintendent, do we have any revisions to the agenda?
Yes, we do. Item C-11, accounts receivable write-offs, school year 1314, Ridge and Travis add backup. Item C-13, bit recommendations, replace backup. Item R-94, charter review, community member add backup. And two new items just add item C-86, recommendation for administrative and instruction personnel, replace backup. Item C-90, revised school calendar executive summary, replace backup. That concludes the revisions for today.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to accept the January 22, 2019, school board meeting agenda as revised. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So the motion on the floor is acceptance of the January 22, 2019, school board meeting agenda as revised. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, Madam Superintendent, we have special recognitions?
Yes, we do. I would like to ask school board member Sarah Beff Reynolds to please step to the front for our special recognition. Will Deputy Superintendent John Hill come forward for our district heroes recognition? Also, Ms. Rachel Pleasant, Senior Director of Public Relations, will come forward at this time.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're very pleased to initiate a new recognition, the Superintendent's Hero Award. Heroic acts take place within Polk County public schools every day. Courageous, quick-thinking, responsive individuals take actions that safeguard our children from harm. These brave individuals make a life-saving difference for our children, but all too often, they go unrecognized. We know we'll never be able to honor all our heroes. There are simply too many. But the Superintendent's Hero Award is a start on honoring the selflessness and the most sheer dedication to putting students first that happens within our schools. Please welcome Bartow Middle School Principal Chris Roberts and Assistant Principal Dwayne Johnson, who will be receiving one of our very first Superintendent's Hero Awards. In October 2018, Principal Roberts and Mr. Johnson learned of two students who were skipping class in a restroom. The situation piqued Mr. Johnson's suspicion, and he suggested that the students' belongings be searched. That search turned up several weapons that the students were planning to use to do harm to other students at the school. That search turned up, I'm sorry, in submitting Mr. Johnson for the Superintendent's Hero Award, Principal Roberts wrote, "I am forever thankful and grateful for Mr. Johnson and his quick thoughts and actions on this day. He stopped a plan that no school or community ever wants to deal with, the intent by a person or group to cause great bodily harm to students on school grounds during the school day." Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay, next, we will welcome Mulberry High School Principal Michael Young and his school resource deputy, Preston Davis. In November 2018, Deputy Davis heard gunshots near the school. He immediately contacted dispatchers and responded to the scene, as well as communicated with school administrators. The school was promptly placed on lockdown to ensure the safety of the students until the scene could be secured. Principal Young wrote, "The lockdown was lifted within the hour. The students and staff of Mulberry High School are extremely appreciative of Deputy Davis's quick action in keeping our school safe." Deputy Davis is also an alumni of Mulberry High School, and we are very grateful for his dedication to not only his alma mater, but our district as a whole. We will be posting these pictures on social media, and we want any principals who might be watching this presentation to know they can make recommendations for the Superintendent's Hero Award by emailing goodnews@polk-fl.net. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations, and thank you both for your heroic acts of kindness that you did for our students and community. Next, will Ernest Joe, Senior Director of Diversity, come forward to receive a proclamation for Black History Month?
We're going to ask Ms. Kay Fields to come. And I think someone is going to-
Ms. Millard will be reading the proclamation tonight.
Hello, Ms. Millard.
Let me first say, Ms. Superintendent Byrd and all of the board members, Happy New Year, just in case I haven't had a chance to see you. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Proclamation from the School Board of Polk County. Whereas the recognition of Black History Month is an opportune time to salute the achievements of the past, gain insight for the present, inspire progress for the future, and teach the children about heroes of color. And whereas African-American students make up 20% and staff 17% of the Polk School District, which joyfully celebrates Black History Month and the many contributions of African-American teachers, doctors, lawyers, engineers, architects, soldiers, inventors, artists, writers, scientists, and many ordinary people who have demonstrated extraordinary courage, talent, and service to others. And whereas a significant increase in the graduation rate of African-American students in Polk County public schools shows that these students and families value the importance of a quality education as the foundation for a successful life and career. And whereas we celebrate Black History Month, which began on February 12, 1926, and expanded in 1976 as part of the nation's bicentennial in order to recognize the humanity of a people who survived against incredible historical odds to exemplify to the world the power and audacity of the human spirit. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Polk County, Florida, that we designate the month of February 2019 as Black History Month.
Thank you very much, Ms. Miller. The next board meeting will be on the 28th of February, so this is why we're doing this now. Let me just say this, each year, we try to let a participant in our system receive this. I want to thank Ms. Fields for a couple of things, not just for being on the board, but for Girls Inc. And I can tell you this, being the principal last couple of years of Kathleen High School, a lot of young ladies have told me that they've been through the program and the things that they learned. So I want to say thank you and keep up the good work with our children, okay? Give you a few minutes, say something. Yes, ma'am, you want to? Don't tell God, don't worry about that.
He won't mind. Well, thank you, Coach, and I am very humbled, and I am very thankful for the blessings that God has bestowed upon me. But I didn't do it by myself. There've been many, many people before me. And I remember growing up in a very small town, McComb, Mississippi, remembering that there were restrictions placed on me because of the color of my skin. But my father and my mom, before she passed away, always told me that I needed to stay focused on getting an education and to go to college and to be the best that I could be, and I'm thankful for that. I also had a lot of people in the neighborhood that embraced me and supported me. But I want to spotlight people who have come before me on the school board that's of color. The first person of color that was elected to the school board was Mr. George Goss, Funeral Home Director for Goss Funeral Home in Bartow, here in Bartow. And he's now gone to be with the Lord. And then we have Mr. J.J. Corbett, and everybody knows Mr. J.J. Corbett. He is an amazing man. I believe he's in his 90s now, but he's still actively engaged in the community. And then the third person was Dr. Brenda Redout. Brenda is very much involved in our community. She's the Executive Director of the Tabith House Ministries. And then we have Dr. Deborah Wright, and I believe Deborah, right now, is involved in the community, just volunteering. And we're just very thankful for the opportunity that's been afforded us. And before I sit down, I just want to talk about Dr. Martin Luther King. Yesterday, we celebrated his 90th anniversary birthday and had an opportunity to go to the MLK Annual Breakfast. And the gentleman who spoke, his name is Pastor Carl Flags. And he talked about the importance of unity. He talked about keeping unity, and it's you and I truthfully yoked, and the value of us working together. And so I encourage each of us to work together for the good of our community, for the good of our school district, for the good of our students. And if we do that, then Dr. King and many others beyond him would not have died in vain so that we could have the freedoms that we have. So I'm just very thankful, and I appreciate it. And Coach, thank you for what you do.
You're more than welcome. Just two quick messages. I want to thank Jim Freeman. He's the county manager. Each year, each year, they partner with us in Dying Plowed, and they have the MLK Dinner. I think my secretary sent some invitations. If you can, you'll get a chance to see the first-place winners. And the second and third-place winners, they'll read that. That's on the 31st of this month. And then LB Brown Heritage Festival, one of the best since I've been here. But the 8th, February 8th, at 9 o'clock, is when they highlight our children, and that's really neat. So thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Again, thank you, Ms. Fields.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes all my announcements and recognitions for today.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. So at this time, I would invite anyone who would like to come forward and to speak to items on the agenda. If there's an agenda item you'd like to speak to, please come forward and do so at this time. Okay? So we do have three sets of minutes to approve. We'll start with the minutes of the December 11, 2018 work session. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of the minutes of the December 11, 2018 work session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The second set of minutes are those of the December 11, 2018, school board meeting. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Motion on the floor is approval of the minutes of the December 11, 2018, school board meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the final set of minutes are those of the January 8, 2019, work session. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
So a motion and a second. Any discussion? Motion on the floor is approval of the minutes of the January 8, 2019, work session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval of this consent agenda?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And Madam Superintendent, we have some new administrators?
Yes, we do have one. I'm pleased to recommend the appointment of, and I hope I'm saying this correctly, Yomani Berian as Senior Director of School Improvement. Ms. Berian previously served as the CEO President of Teach Florida LLC. She attended Florida State University, earning a bachelor's degree in English. She later went on to earn her master's degree in Management and Administration of Educational Programs from Nova Southeastern University. Welcome, Ms. Berian.
Greetings, everyone. I want to say thank you. Good afternoon to the board members, to Superintendent Byrd. I am very honored and elated for this appointment. It is near and dear to my heart. School Improvement, School Turnaround, is the environment I love working in and have worked in for many years. And so I am eager, ready to start, and hit the ground running. So I thank you all for this appointment, and I won't let you down. Thank you.
Do you have any family with you, or anyone joining you?
I actually do. Oh, I have quite a few family members. Could they just stand? All my family and friends and pastors, please stand. I love them. We just transitioned here from Pensacola, and we live in Fort Meade now. And so Fort Meade came out, and so I thank you all. I love all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. We look forward to it.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chair, this concludes all the new administration for this meeting.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. So the next, we actually have two appointments to serve on the Charter Review Team, one from District 4 and one from District 2. So we'll start with District 4 first. And before I ask for a motion, I'd like to ask Ms. Reynolds to introduce our appointee.
Thank you. So I will be moving to appoint Mr. Craig Clevenger, who is here with us this evening, to the Charter Review Committee. And should I just read his bio? I'll read his bio. So Craig Clevenger is a 2001 graduate of Lake Region High School. Craig returned to Polk County public schools as a teacher at Winter Haven Senior High School from 2009 to 2017. He is a life member of the Florida State Alumni Association and a graduate of the Educator Preparation Institute at Polk State College. As an advocate for education, Craig serves on the Board of Directors for both Cypress Junction Montessori Public Charter School and the Public Education Partnership of Winter Haven, PEP. He has leveraged his social capital to generate support for local nonprofits, including Polk Education Foundation and the local Boys and Girls Clubs. After volunteering on the Youth Leadership Polk Advisory Council, he worked as a consultant for Polk Vision in 2018 to develop community volunteer programs supporting pilot initiatives in local public elementary schools to improve student attendance and school health. Craig was recognized for his professional and civic contributions as a recipient of the 2014 Polk Emerging Leaders Award and was selected as the Outstanding Club President for the Florida District of Kiwanis International in 2016. He was appointed by the Winter Haven City Commission and elected Vice Chair for the City of Winter Haven Charter Review Committee in 2017 and is a member of the Greater Winter Haven Chamber of Commerce Government and Legislative Affairs Committee. Craig is a graduate of Leadership Winter Haven Class 38 and a Merge serves Class 6. He currently serves as Vice Chair for the Endeavor Winter Haven Young Professionals Group. Through his company, At the Club Vision, Craig guides new and potential residents through familiarization tours, helping his guests assimilate to the community while introducing locals and tourists to the lakeside lifestyle along Florida's inland coast. And when he left the school district, he told me that he still wanted to stay involved. So the lesson is, don't tell me something because I remember everything. So I am happy to move to appoint Craig Clevenger to the Charter Review Commission Committee.
You have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So the motion on the floor is to appoint Craig Clevenger to serve on the Charter Review Team. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Clevenger, stand up. We'll give you a round of applause. The second appointment, I'm going to ask Ms. Reynolds to introduce that nominee as well.
I'm loading the bio. Yes, I'm loading it. The second nomination is from District 2, from Ms. Lori Cunningham, and is Angela Polito Wadsworth. Sorry, Angela Polito Wadsworth. Born and raised on the Space Coast of Florida, moved to Lake Wales, Polk County, following law school in 1994. She's a graduate of Loyola University in New Orleans and Stetson College of Law. She was a former partner with the law firm of Lilly O'Toole &amp; Brown, LLP, where she worked as a trial lawyer for 21 years before retiring in 2015. Ms. Polito Wadsworth has served on and held leadership positions on various boards of directors, including the 10th Circuit Judicial Nominating Commission, the Lakeland Bar Association, Polk Vision Steering Committee, the Lake Wales Chamber, and EDC, the Lake Wales Charter School Board, the Lake Wales Care Center, the Lake Wales Arts Council, and the Holy Spirit Catholic Church Parish Council. She resides in Lake Wales with her husband of 21 years, Keith Wadsworth, and their children, Isabel, a 2017 graduate of Lake Wales High School IB and a current scholarship student at Randolph-Macon University in Virginia, and Harris, an honorable student at Edward Bach Academy. Ms. Polito Wadsworth enjoys spending time with her family and friends, serving her community, painting, listening to music, playing tennis, traveling, going to the beach, and camping. And it is my pleasure to move to appoint Ms. Angela Polito Wadsworth to serve on the Charter Review Team.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So the motion on the floor is to appoint Angela Polito Wadsworth to serve on the Charter Review Team. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is item R-95, and this is approval of the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Public Assistance Recovery Agreement. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Public Assistance Recovery Agreement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is item R-96. This is approval of Resolution 2018-2018-2019-12 allowing for the reimbursement of funds for those capital projects listed in Exhibit A from bonds. And I'll read those for the record. There are 12 of them. Northeast County High School, Mulberry Senior High School, Old Davenport Elementary School, Eastside, Fred Garner, Kingsford, on Bailey Road, Albert Elementary, Southwest Middle, Auburndale Central, James Stevens Elementary, Alta Vista, and gymnasiums at the following middle schools, Dennison, Lake Gibson, Lakeland Highland, Westwood, Bartow, and McLaughlin Middle Schools. So what's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Townsend?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify for anybody in the audience. This does not mean we are bonding for these schools. We're going to have that discussion later. What it does allow us to do is get reimbursed from any bonds that we do ultimately enter into, if we do, for money that we're spending now. We're starting to spend money on those schools now, and this is just a way to include that in any bonds should we decide to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend, for that explanation. I think that was very important. Any further discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of Resolution 2018-2019-12 allowing for the reimbursement of funds for those capital projects as named. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item R-97, approval of the Teen Driver Challenge Program in partnership with Polk County Public Schools and the Polk County Sheriff's Office. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of the Teen Driver Challenge Program in partnership with Polk County Public Schools and the Polk County Sheriff's Office. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I would, in just a moment, I'm going to invite the public to come up and discuss policy updates. But before I do that, I would like to ask Mr. Bridges to read into the record those policy updates that we will be voting on this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, Mrs. Wendy Dodge is our governmental liaison. The legislature is in session, so she is in Tallahassee, and the chairman asked for me to read these. There's an organization called NEOLA, N-E-O-L-A, that is in the business of assisting school districts in Florida and across the country to stay in compliance with all of the latest legislative challenges. As you may know, the legislature in Florida meets once a year, and they go up and they change everything. And so we have to redo everything, and that means that we have to tab out a whole new book of laws and figure all those things out. But NEOLA's job is to go through all of those thousands and thousands of pages and make sure that their client districts, including Polk, adopt policies that comply with all the changes in the laws. So for this year, we do this a couple of times a year. And for this round, NEOLA and Mrs. Dodge worked together to draft a number of changes, primarily responsive to changes in the law. The first of those is going to be number 172, visitation of schools by school board members. This is a new requirement in the law, and this policy will comply with it. 2111, parental and family engagement in the school program, which is updated to include Every Student Succeeds Act provisions. Number 2252 is being deleted. That's the old policy on digital classrooms. Number 2261, Title I services, is being updated to reflect changes to the supplement-not-supplant requirement. Number 2280 on physical education, it's updated to include statutory requirement for recess. Number 2370.01, virtual instruction, modified to reflect statutory changes to student options and eligibility requirements. 2371, having to do with Hope Scholarships, a new policy. 2431, interscholastic athletics, modified to reflect statutory changes impacting student participation. Number 2623, student assessments, which is modified to reflect statutory changes impacting access for Florida Virtual School students and the Florida Standard Alternate Assessment. 3220, evaluation of instructional personnel. 3590, personnel files, which is modified to comply with statutory changes regarding reports of misconduct and investigations. Identical changes will be made to the parallel policies, 1590 and 4590, for administrative staff and support staff. 6233 is the district budget, and it's modified to comply with changes made in the law regarding categorical funds, notification regarding fund balance, and changes requested by the board. Number 9150, school visitors, updated to reflect requirements placed in the law and changes requested by the board. And number 9800, charter schools, which is updated to reflect the panoply of statutory changes for this year. Mr. Chair, those are the revisions that are recommended for adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. So at this time, I would invite anyone from the public to come to speak to those policy updates as read into the record by Mr. Bridges. Okay. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the new and revised school board policy updates as presented at the November 13 and December 11 work session and as just read into the record.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So the motion on the floor is to approve the new and revised school board policy updates as presented at the November 13 and December 11 work sessions. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Superintendent, do you have a report for us?
I do. It's a brief report. I'd just like to say, on Tuesday, last Tuesday, we celebrated our 2019 School Related Employee and Teacher of the Year. I also like to say our students did an awesome job. What a wonderful program they put together, and they made sure that they showcased, and we wanted to make sure that we showed our teachers how much we appreciate them through putting our students first. So I'd like to thank Marissa Green and Rachel and the entire PR team for another successful event, and it was truly wonderful to be there with our teachers. Congratulations to the School Related Employee of the Year, Cynthia Wimberly, from Sand Hill Elementary, and to our new Teacher of the Year, Jenny Siren, of Horizons Elementary. A work session is scheduled Tuesday, February 12, 2019, at 9:00 a.m. to be held in the Superintendent's Conference Room. A work session is scheduled also for Tuesday, February 26, 2019, at 12:30 p.m. to be held in the Superintendent's Conference Room, followed by the 5:00 p.m. school board meeting in the auditorium located at 1915 South Florre Avenue, Bartow, Florida. That concludes my announcements for today.
Thank you, Superintendent Byrd. Mr. Bridges?
For the report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Ms. Matthews?
Good evening.
Good evening.
This evening, I'm bringing to you a request for reappointment of one of the community members of the Audit and Finance Committee, Dr. William Hahn, CPA and Professor of Accounting at Southeastern University. Dr. Hahn has served a three-year term and is being recommended for reappointment by school board member Lisa Harris to, I'm sorry, Lisa Miller. Come find her.
Bob is going to be surprised about that.
Sorry. To a second three-year term, as allowed by the charter. Dr. Hahn is a valuable member of the committee and has graciously agreed to serve a second term, which will commence with your approval.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to reappoint Dr. William Hahn, nominated by Ms. Miller, to the Audit and Finance Committee for a second three-year term. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. So, a motion and a second. Any discussion? So, the motion on the floor is approval of the reappointment of Dr. William Hahn, nominated by Ms. Miller, to the Audit and Finance Committee for a second three-year term. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Was there, was there, did you have an additional?
That was all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so, at this time, we will go to our board members' reports. We'll start with Mr. Townsend.
That, just very briefly, I thought we had a very good work session today. I would encourage everybody to go look at it. Very substantive, I think fairly tough discuss, discussions about important things, and I, I think the, the public would benefit from seeing, seeing it. And, you know, I think, I'm, I'm just very pleased with, with the quality of, of discussions and the ways we're, we're talking about things. And even when we don't agree, we're, we're explaining why and, and trying to forge some kind of direction forward. So, anyway, I was, I was just pleased with it. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Ms. Fortney?
Well, I've been busy, ooh, excuse me. I got to attend Travis graduation ceremony, Bill Duncan Opportunity Center and Health Clinic tours. I visited Sykes, Purcell, Florale Avenue, Loffman Oaks, Highland City, Spencer-Holland Elementary. So proud of the work they are doing at those elementary schools. Awesome, awesome job. Took a tour of Cypress Junction Montessori, which is a K-8 in Winter Haven, Gauze Academy. I am sitting in now on the Bartow High School Fire and Medical Advisory. Was able to see Winter Haven High School and Center State Banks partnership. We did forums for Leadership Lakeland and Leadership Winter Haven, which I thought were good to get the public knowledge about the good things that Polk County School Board does do. The ESC Advisory, Pace Ribbon Cutting, the Toy Banquet was, and SRE was awesome. And then I had a prayer breakfast yesterday in Winter Haven with, for Dr. King and, and the community at the Northeast Center. And just want to say that all of us want to do what's best for our kids and put students first. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Ms. Cunningham wasn't able to join us, so we'll go to Ms. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The past two weeks have been full of really exciting things, so I'm just going to highlight a few of them. As Ms. Fortney mentioned, we got to talk to Leadership Lakeland and Leadership Winter Haven, which is always really exciting to go and talk to the leaders in our local communities and explain to them kind of what we do and how we work. They ask really good questions, and I think challenge each of us to think outside the box, which I think we all appreciate. Again, Teacher of the Year was outstanding, and thank you to all of our teachers. It sometimes ends up being a late night, but I think it's a lovely ceremony, and they're all winners, as I think we said several times throughout the night. But they are all doing what's great for kids, and they're for the right reasons. The last thing, oh, also Ridge Technical College, I got to attend their nursing graduation ceremony, which was very nice, and I think the shortest graduation ceremony to date, so. But the big thing that I want to highlight is Winter Haven Public Education Partnership, PEP, which I know I talk about a lot, but they have an initiative that they started this year called Ready, Set, Read. They partnered with Garden Grove Elementary as their first pilot school, and they have two tutors that are there twice a week and spend 30 minutes each time they're there with six different students. So, they're reaching 12 students, 30 minutes, twice a week. They just got their December Star Literacy Scores back, which is their test that they take several times a year to show progress. And I had Ms. Compton send me their data, just because it was so impressive when she read it off. So, they had a student go from 7%, 0.7, to 78%. 1% to 40%. I get chills reading them. 16% to 73%. 17%, and I'm only showing the biggest ones because they're all like 20% to 30% gains. 17% to 93%. And they're all like that. So, I just want to give a shout out to PEP for going into a school saying, hey, what can we do to help? This was a great partnership between Garden Grove and Winter Haven Public Education Partnership. So, I think that's kind of what it's all about, is what can we do to support our schools? And this organization has gone above and beyond to wrap around their schools and say, how can we help you? And they're now pilot. They have a meeting. I can tell you when it is, because Audrey told me I could share it. But it is net, the 7th, February 7th, at Grove Roots at 5:00 p.m. If you are interested in getting involved or seeing how you can help, they're going to be talking about where they can have different pilot programs, because clearly it's been very successful at Garden Grove. So, great work to them. And that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Ms. Fields?
Thank you. I have a couple of items. I, I'm very excited about what's going on at Kathleen High School. I had a chance to go to the Hope Scholars Celebration Dinner on Wednesday of last week, and I'm, I'm sure that many of you all know this is a, a master's program that educators from Kathleen High School have an opportunity to participate in, where the tuition is free. And they have the classes on campus, and they've been working extremely hard over the last year, and they'll be graduating, I believe it's in the summer. And it was just amazing to see how excited they are, the passion that they have, the love that they have for their students. And they did an equity study, and it was interesting what they were able to see. And one of the things that was just very inspiring to me was how one of the young ladies, who's a student there, talked about the reputation that Kathleen High School has and how it's really not fair, and it's really not the way Kathleen High School really is, and how proud she is to be a student there, and some things that they're doing to, to change that perception of Kathleen High School. And they also are establishing an alumni Facebook page, and I think we're going to be getting more information on that, and we'll be posting that and trying to get more people to embrace Kathleen High School because they're doing a, a great job. And I want to thank Dr. Aches, so passionate by education, it's evident. I want to thank Ms. Maria Longa, her work as well, and the staff, Mr. Johnny Jackson at Kathleen High School. We're very fortunate to have him as a leader of that school. And I had an opportunity to do my first ever, and, and more to come, town hall meeting, an evening of listening at Kathleen High School on last Monday. And it was my first ever town hall meeting, and I was very pleased with the attendance. When it, when it was getting closer to the time to start, I was a little bit nervous. But people started coming in, and we had about 50 people there, and they were very responsive. And the hot topic was discipline, and how we can get a better handle on discipline in the classroom so that our kids can learn. And then the bus issue about kids coming to school late or being picked up after school late, and how that impacts not just the students, but it also impacts the stu, the staff. And, and, and just trying to get some suggestions on how we can flip the script there, and then data gathering, suggestions for teachers, and how, how they can filter down and help them to do a better job as it relates to understanding what they have, as it relates to helping the kids do better academically. And so, we're going to be getting answers and providing feedback to the people that came, and we'll be posting it on our Facebook page as well. So, all in all, as Ms. Reynolds just said, we've had a real busy last two weeks, but I think it's been a good two weeks. And then I, I can't say enough about the annual Martin Luther King Breakfast that was held on yesterday at the Ross Center in Lakeland. How, it was presented by the Interdenominational Ministers' Alliance, Inc. of Lakeland. It was amazing. And the gentleman who spoke really had a word about unity and, and the importance of us working together. Because at the end of the day, it's really not about me, and it's not about us as adults. It's about what's best for our students. So, I'm excited and looking forward to all the great things that we're going to be able to do in our community, focusing on unity for the next year. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Ms. Miller?
Thank you. I wanted to mention a couple of things. Many have been mentioned already that have kept us busy. One thing that I was totally surprised by, and not, I shouldn't be, but I was so excited Saturday to attend the Polk County High School Senior Art Expedit, Expedition. That is a, it's at the Polk Museum of Art, and it's still there. The Polk Museum is free, so I encourage you to do that, to go by there. But if you can walk through the exhibit and look at the artwork, and these are not from art schools, these are seniors in our county of art students who do amazing work. The museum purchased one of the artworks to keep in their collection. They had someone touring that asked to buy one of the pieces of art. We have some amazing talented students in our senior high, in our high schools, and these are seniors ready to head out into the world and, and share their talents. So, I encourage you to go by Polk Museum of Art to see that free artwork. It's in the first exhibit. As you come in on the left. There's one other thing I wanted to mention of good news. It was shared with me that the Polk County Special Olympic Volleyball Team from Ridge Community High School will be on their way to the World Games in Abu Dhabi. Thank you to the Davenport Moose Lodge, who helped raise, fundraise to make sure they got there on their trip. They had been to the USA Games and, and won that. And this is a unified team. So, I don't know if you know much about Special Olympics. This team has athletes who may have different disabilities, but they're paired with a helper that also plays the sport as well. So, they're playing together. And then moving from the USA Games on to the World Special Olympics, representing us and the USA is, is an amazing feat. So, thank you to the community of Davenport who helps support that team. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Miller.